Ron, are you ready? I'm just gonna bang. See if he runs. You think he'll run? We'll call to order the Clinton City Council meeting. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
See how he is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You moved pretty quick, Ron. Can we please begin with roll call?
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Sealy.
Here.
Connell.
Yes, here.
Schummers.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kerns.
Here.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of September 28th, 2021, and they be approved as published on October 9th, 2021. I make this, move this as adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Schummers.
Thank your honor. I have a proclamation recognizing that October is code compliance month. Whereas our code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens living in the community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, property maintenance, and other codes and ordinances, and where our code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their jobs seriously, are proud of their department and our city, and are committed to promoting life safety and improving neighborhood aesthetics in the course of their daily jobs, and whereas our code enforcement officers have a challenging and demanding job where they are constantly in the public eye, and whereas our code enforcement officers interact with residents, property owners, city officials, and boards and commissions to enforce city code and keep our city up to standards clear of blight, nuisances, and public safety hazards, and whereas the quality of life and safety of all of our residents depends on the enforcement of the city's municipal code. Now therefore, I, Scott Madison, Mayor of the City of Clinton, Iowa, do hereby recognize that October is code compliance month and thank our code enforcement officers for all they do for the city. In witness whereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Clinton, Iowa, to be affixed this 12th day of October, 2021. Signed, Scott Madison, Mayor. And thank you for all the code enforcement. They do have a thankless job.
Yes. All right, moving to public hearings. We will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for Mill Creek Parkway Concrete Patching Project W-2021. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six will unmute you. Any council members that would like to address this public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Mill Creek Parkway Concrete Patching Project W-2021. I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning disposition of city-owned property 703 Ninth Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
Just one written item that was incorporated with the packet, your honor.
Okay. Is there any citizens or online or in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
Do have one question. He does know, he lived across the street. He no longer lives across the street. Is that right? Because he wrote "lived," but then it reads "lives," but then I couldn't find where he lived.
It looks like his address listed on there would be...
Or is it a rental?
I'm not sure.
Because he, here it says.
But, but what was, I mean, the most important part is what was proposed is not allowable in our zoning district.
Right.
Okay. I'm fine. I have nothing more.
Okay. Any, anyone else that would like to address the public hearing, council members or citizens? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Schummers.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of 703 Ninth Avenue South to Mars Rentals LLC for $100. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning disposition of city-owned property parcel 80-0845-0000, Ninth Avenue South and Lincoln Boulevard. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are online or in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Is there any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of parcel 80-0845-0000, Ninth Avenue South and Lincoln Boulevard to Brian Ray for $300. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of Windsor Drive south of 16th Avenue South to Nestle Perina Pet Care Company for $175,000. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, your honor, but I know we have some good folks from Nestle that have joined us online.
Okay. Our Nestle folks that are online, would you like to make any comments at the public hearing? Star six will unmute you. Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, and I did have conversations today via email with them, and they're excited to move forward on this and take this as part of their property and then move forward with their other projects as well.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving the sale of city-owned property to Nestle Perina Pet Care Company for the sum of $175,000. I move this to be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Okay, moving to the audience comment section. I have one yellow card filled out. Mr. Cenaros, come on up. Just to, so we know, the audience comment session is not a time where the council can interact, so you got, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record before you go, and then, go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak here. My name is Ruth Cenaros. I live at 737 First Avenue South. I'm the owner of Mejitas downtown on Fifth Avenue and Second Street, and that's actually what I'm here to talk about. Ran into a little situation Friday night. Couple doors down, they have a permit to have venues. So this gentleman brings in rappers. This has been going on for about two, three months. And Friday night, police got involved and made everybody clear off the streets. Evidently, there's no parking after 2:00, which I was unaware of downtown. Kind of, kind of looked like he was signaling out these people that were downtown, made them all move. Of course, that kind of really hurt my business because we were open for that time for this venue. We're not, we don't serve alcohol. They have rappers come in and they perform. This has been going on for a couple of months, and it's really helped out my business tremendously. And so I'm just trying to find out, you know, what I need to do about it. You know, it seemed like they singled out these people saying they all have to leave because they're parked on the street. There's no parking after 2:00. Well, this is kind of news to me. You know, I do see, I did drive around. There is signs, no parking there. But if you go downtown anytime on Fifth Avenue, Second Street, you're going to see vehicles parked there from 2:00 to 6:00, which there's no parking. And in fact, at my block there, where I actually sit, there is no sign that says you can't park there after 2:00. So, you know, if I ever wanted to stay open late, which I do on these venues, people can't park there to pick up their food. So I just want you guys to be aware of some of this. In my point of view, my eyes, it looked like there was a little racial profiling going on. There was a bunch of black people downtown having a good time, and they meet and leave by 2:00. You know, they cleared the streets. It's the first time this has happened in two to three months. So I just wanted to bring that to council's attention. I was hoping the gentleman that puts on the venues was going to join me here so he could explain a little bit of what he has going on. Like I said, I, I stay open because it's helped my business out tremendously. You know, that night, it cost me probably $300 to $500 of lost business. I just want council to be aware of it. I'm sure I will be getting phone calls from somebody, maybe the police chief, I don't know, to explain what was going on. As far as I know, there's never been any problems downtown. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, Mr. Cenaros, I think we'll have you link up with Matt and Chief Jerry, and then we can get you some answers on kind of what happened that night, okay? Yep. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council during this time? Is there anybody online that would like to address the council? All right, hearing none. We will move on to consent agenda. Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, your honor. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I was actually going to pull a lot, the 7K LM, the stump removal.
7K?
I'm just going to pull one just for information so we know how that is about. You know what I'm talking about?
Okay.
We'll get to that.
Sure.
And the other one is 7O and 7P are the ones that would be kind of, because I think that's a new program. We haven't hit on in a while.
7O and 7P together?
Yeah, and I think there's a third of them, but we're just, this conversation, that'd be those two.
Okay. Any other consent agenda items from council that you'd like to pull? All right, hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank you, your honor. I move the claims be approved, received, and placed on file for 10, 12, 21, and for the Home Depot claims listing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution to establish a public hearing for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CBG-CV, Commercial Facade Improvement Application. I move that this be approved as adopted or read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Yeah, go ahead.
And we'll follow up on a couple of other ones as well. I know we have Al here for the next one. So this is just a follow-up for the council of the seven items that were available for the COVID dollars through the state. You guys focused on the facades, the micro enterprise loans, and then also daycare. So this is the first one of those coming up.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving architectural design and construction services contract with Willett Hoffman &amp; Associates Incorporated for the downtown revitalization facade project. I move this to be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Since you came, we might as well just at least introduce yourself, sir. Al?
Good afternoon, council. I am Al Varney with Willett Hoffman &amp; Associates. I am honored to be here and have our contract be considered for approval tonight. If you have any questions of me, that's the reason I came, and it's one of those insurance things. If I didn't come, you would have had questions.
How do you feel about the scope and the timeline that you've been given on this? For this turnaround, to be able to work with this number of buildings and business owners to, you know, bring the facade that they see in their mind, but also some of the historical piece? And then the timeline you have to be able to do that? Are you comfortable with all that?
We are. We intend to have two teams, if you want to call that, two teams of two people each, go and visit every one of the sites. That might take a couple of days depending on what we're looking at. You know, the big one, you know, the lumbered kings, that one is kind of a long elevation. But all the rest of them all fall within, you know, pretty easy to do digestible pieces, if you will. And so what we intend to do is take photos, obtain or collect historic photos, if there are any of those. If they're not, to talk with the people that are there. It's all in a matter of getting all of that scheduled and prior to us showing up so that we can do that.
Just shout out to Jason. He turned this around really quick for the RP. Appreciate that, too. You guys tasked him. It was a good task, but we look forward to this, Al. I think this will be good. Even if we don't get everything we think we might out of this round, this will actually give us, as we like to say, something on the shelf that we can go to, because we think there's going to be additional rounds that come for the dollars. So then we can actually already be set and ready for those as well. So, and we're hoping too, is from the council, is that it's like a good flow with the building. So maybe Councilmember Connell's building wants to have this. My building wants to have that. But you guys kind of come together and we kind of meet in the middle so it, there's a little more familiarity with the buildings. Still with historical background, but they fit into the scene together.
Yeah, so many of them, you know, you can kind of pick out what you're going to have to do. Others, the ones that are covered up with panels and stuff like that, you kind of shrug your shoulders and wonder, well, I'm not really sure yet. You know, you take your views from the surrounding buildings and try and do the best you can with those. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Thanks, Al.
Any other questions or comments from council? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution to establish a public hearing for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CBG-CV, Micro Enterprise Assistance Application. I move this to be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution to establish a public hearing for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CBG-CV, Daycare Assistance Application. I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, your honor. I move the council consider an ordinance for the first time.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending scope, oh, excuse me, an ordinance amending section 159.046A and 159.049D of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you, your honor. I move that the council waive the two prior readings requiring requirements of Iowa Code Section 380.3 and place the ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second to waive the Iowa Code Section 380.3 requirements and place this on its final passage. In order for that to happen, it requires a three-quarter vote of all council members. Can we please have a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Schummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes to waive the two prior readings of the Iowa Code. We have an original motion and a second for the ordinance. Is there any discussion on this?
Already just really excited to move forward and be one of the first ones in Iowa to have an automated storage retrieval system. I'd like to thank Building Neighborhood Service, reaching out to Karen and team over there for working with this. Also, as Councilmember Schummers alluded to, last meeting, the zoning board, which still self, they go back to the zoning board to get their permits that they need to have. That's not the word, the special.
Variance.
Variance, variance, sorry. And so, but good teamwork coming together, the mayor even included with the meetings to sit down with Nestle Perina. They're a great partner to have here, and we're looking forward to all the things that come with all their buildings and other things that are happening at Nestle Perina. And we want to hear Roger, how the soccer game's going.
So I got just one question, and it's kind of totally off, but we know that Pione already did an expansion. I think we had 200 more trucks, I believe, that were added to that. I'm going to assume this is probably going to maybe double or triple the amount of trucks, correct? Going in and out? I mean, that's a big expansion.
I will oppose that.
And I'm always saying that because the other part that I play is Highway 30, and so that could make a big impact long-term.
Good point.
Andrew, are you still online?
Yes, I am online, so I'm not aware that the number of trucks will actually be affected by this. So we're not going to be, we're not bringing product in, or we're going to be balancing our supply chain. But again, the capacity of the factory is based on the capacity of the factory. So I'm not aware of the additional trucks at this point. However, what this will do is this will allow us in the future to expand within the existing warehouse area of the factory to grow in an area that's congruent with the existing facility. So what this does is this does two things. Number one is it gets our, it gives us an efficient place for storing our goods. So the product is already being shipped, but now it's going to off-site store. So everything, if not everything, but a great deal of what's produced there goes to a third-party logistics chain, which means people are just unloading it from the truck, storing it, and loading it back on the truck. So what this will do is this will, you know, make our supply chain more efficient and more cost-effective.
Sir, this is Councilmember Schummers. I was hoping you'd say this would greatly increase...
I was hoping you'd say this would greatly increase if we need to four-lane Highway 30 much earlier in the rush. So if you could help reword that just slightly so that the Valleys office can hear you say that.
So once people are able to purchase the Windsor Drive, we have to do a traffic study, and maybe that could drive.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, for being online. We really appreciate it.
So I appreciate all the work you've done, so thank you all.
Is there any other discussion from council on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shemmers?
Yes.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kerns?
Yes. Councilmember Connell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the council consider an ordinance for the first time.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending scope of deer management zone of the code of ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I move the council waive two prior readings requirement of Iowa Code Section 380.3 and place the ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to waive the two prior readings requirement of Iowa Code Section 380.3. In order for that, it requires a three-quarter vote from all council members. Can we please have a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shemmers?